My dad told us to take French, so we all took.
Well, in most rallies. Oh, I think. So, like, if you're closer to closer, the combo is great.
It's like general.
Three dollars. Three dollars, it makes sense.
All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening. Um, welcome. I am Akuwamenzenu. I'm the president of the Clementine Gold Group. We're going to get started uh with our draft environmental impact statement um hearing. And so today, we're going to discuss the project. I'm actually going to introduce um a couple of other speakers who will be speaking today. Uh with the Buffalo Sewer Authority, we have Regina Harris, who's the project manager, and Rosie. I don't know where Rosie went that quick. Oh, hey, Rosie. Um with the Hayes and Sawyer team, we have Rebecca, Rebecca, Katie, and Mark. And then with Clementine Gold Group, it's Mark Glasgow, Ken Levere, and myself, Akuwamenzenu. And so in terms of our agenda tonight, we're going to look at the objectives and process, the program and project background. And then we'll talk about the long-term control planning and project alternatives. And then lastly, we'll talk about the actual assessment results from the draft environmental impact statement as well. So I'm going to call up Regina, who's with the Buffalo Sewer Authority, and she'll get us right into the process. Actually, it's Katie first, sorry. Um so Katie with Hayes and Sawyer.
Thanks so much. Uh thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, and especially the EDAC members. I know you've heard some of this before, but we appreciate your continued participation. Um so just a little bit before we get started into the actual impact assessment that we're here to talk about today, I wanted to talk a little bit about just the overall process for those who might not be familiar. So in New York State, we have what's called the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which you might hear called SEAKER. And it's essentially a regulatory process. So if there's a project in New York State that's being funded or undertaken or approved by a state agency, then there needs to be an environmental review process. And depending on the size of the project, that can take several forms. And so for this particular project, because there's a potential for it to have impacts on the community and the environment, uh the Buffalo Sewer Authority elected to do an environmental impact statement, which is actually the most robust version of the document, um documentation process that you can do. And it allows for a public participation process, which is what this is today. Uh and so today's hearing is an opportunity for the public to be able to comment on how the environmental impact statement was done and the findings of the document. Uh they'll, so we'll accept comments today. Then there's a process where we respond to those comments formally. There'll be a common response document. And then we update the environmental impact statement as needed to address those comments. And so that way, the community can make sure that their voices be heard, their concerns are being met, and the proper studies are being done to evaluate the project. Uh and just a little bit more about the timeline. If you recall, we were here in October when we talked about the scope of work, which is the blueprint for how the environmental review is completed. Uh we received comments on that. Those comments of responses are available at the repositories and also um online. And those respond to all the questions that were received at that time. And a final scope of work was prepared that says this is how the EIS has been completed. And that is all available with the environmental document at the following locations. So um there's a version of it available at Buffalo Sewer Authority. It's a printed copy. There are also three printed copies at the three libraries shown here. I think the closest one is the Frank Meriwether Library to the project site. And we have a couple of copies here tonight, if you want to take a look through. And there is also an online uh website where you can go about the project. And on that page, you can link to a PDF of the document. And this QR code should work. And, you know, it's very exciting reading, so if you're feeling really like you need something to help stay awake, you can go read the document. Uh and we'll be at virtual public hearing tomorrow. So if anyone knows of people that weren't able to join this evening, there will be a comment. Uh the same presentation is going to be given tomorrow at noon online. And the list, uh sorry, the link is there. And it's also available through the QR code to the website. So in terms of collecting comments, we will be collecting comments this evening. If you have a comment, you should have an index card. You can go ahead and write down your name. So I want to make sure that for the record, you have the proper spelling of your name. Uh and you can just scratch down a little bit, like the sense of your comment. We're going to use them to match it. But at the end of the presentation, we will give everyone the opportunity to ask questions, make comments, and we'll receive them. We want to leave some time to hear and call you. So we'll try and get through as many of them as we can. You can also send in mail in your comments or email here to Regina. Uh and if you just ask that if you're going to email comments, you add the East Delvin DEIS comments in the subject line so that we can easily find them within that inbox. They will all be collected. They will be categorized. They will be responded to. Uh at the end of, so after the DEIS, I think the public comments close on August twenty-second, yep. And we will hopefully be issuing the response to comments documents and the final environmental impact statement at the end of this hearing. Okay, now.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so we have the project background. First, I want to talk a little bit about our Queen City Clean Waters Initiative. The mission of the Queen City Clean Waters is to save public health and the environment while fostering strong community partnerships, creating meaningful workforce opportunities, and driving lasting economic impact for future generations in Buffalo. Our Queen City Clean Waters um includes fifty-plus sites or fifty-plus projects, uh over one million dollars in investment over the next fifteen years. Those projects include upgrades at our Bird Island Treatment Facility, smart sewer in mine, capacity improvements, green infrastructure, and then offline storage, which the project that we are discussing here, East Delvin, um is an offline storage project. Okay, so what is the project? The project includes improvements to the sewer system along East Delvin Avenue and Florida Avenue at Spelman. The purpose of the project is to keep combined sewage out of Skajakla Creek. Our site is tributary, or this area is tributary to uh Skajakla Creek, which is covered within the city, but discharges it to Forest Lawn Cemetery, if you're familiar. And it will create one million gallons of storage and redirect Buffalo Sewersburg to, in order to redirect it to Buffalo Sewer's Bird Island Treatment Facility. Why is the project required? Um it's required as part of our compliance with the U. United States Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA, and New York State DUC. The requirement, we are required to reduce combined sewer overflows, improve water quality, and increase the resiliency of our system. Our system is over a hundred years old. And as you may know, or may uh imagine, it has uh is is well-aged, but we need improvements to make it work better. So that is what we are doing here. And with many of our projects in the Queen City Clean Waters.
Uh I'll put in some hands, Rebecca. Thanks, Regina. So Buffalo Sewer has a long-term control plan that was approved by uh USCPA and DUC. Um the dry water flow typically, how the system functions, is that it flows from this Skajakla Tunnel um to Bird Island Waste Water Treatment Facility for treatment before it's discharged to uh the Niagara River. During wet weather or snow melt conditions, sewage travels to what's called the Skajakla Creek drain um and then goes to partially treated sewage goes to an OSESO outfall, a combined sewer overflow outfall. So our project that we're talking about tonight um has three separate construction phases. Phase one is on Florida Street. Uh that's happening now. Construction is ongoing, and that will be done by the end of this year. Um you may have seen the contractors out there, um and that work is almost wrapped up. Phase two is in design right now, and that will be done um it's anticipated in twenty twenty-eight. Um and that's a Spelman soup, that's Spelman Place, that's under phase two. And then phase three is the offline storage facility um that we're talking about primarily tonight. Um and that's also in design right now. It will be uh completed with with construction in approximately twenty thirty. So like I mentioned, three construction projects um happening as part of the the Buffalo Sewer's long-term control plan to meet the water quality um and reduce uh pollution, essentially. So we have two options that we're going to be talking about tonight, and you've heard about it um in the past hearing. Option A for um for for the, to achieve the one point five billion gallons of offline storage. Both both options would achieve the same amount of storage. Option A is the underground deep storage tank that's located beneath Kenesha's property at East Delvin in Spelman Place. Option B is a storage tunnel beneath the East Delvin Avenue right-of-way, and that's between East Street and Main Street. We call the future without the proposed action, furniture. Um these are the conditions if the project would not move forward. Um and then from the seeker perspective, the future with the proposed action are referring to these two design options. Option A is Buffalo Sewer's preferred design. And I'll pass it on to Mark Glasgow from Clementine Gold Group.
Thanks, Rebecca. Uh good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Glasgow. I'm with Clementine Gold Group, and we are the lead community engagement partner for this project. Uh I just wanted to take some time to uh shift to one of the most important uh aspects of the project, which is community partnership. Uh and this begins with the East Delvin Advisory Committee, or as we like to call it, the EDAC, um and the feedback that we've received throughout the process. Uh you'll see several of our um dedicated EDAC members in the room right now wearing their lovely EDAC shirts. And we thank them for being here tonight. Uh the EDAC was formed as a bridge, a bridge between the project team and the diverse communities of Buffalo. Our goal is not just to build an infrastructure, but to also build trust, communication, and shared vision. Through the EDAC, we created a platform for community perspectives, education, and updates from our design team. This group has helped us foster timely dialogue, encourage transparency, and encourage and ensure that voices from the neighborhoods most affected by this project are included in every stage of the process. Their role goes beyond feedback in that they're actively serving as community ambassadors. We're really helping shaping to, really helping to shape the conversation and sharing project information within their own uh local networks. Uh we have also hosted a mock uh public hearing with the EDAC just before publishing the the EIS uh in preparation for tonight's public hearing. As part of the uh the EIS process, the EDAC and local residents voiced numerous concerns that we've worked to understand and address thoroughly. Uh these include expected topics like construction impacts, such as vibration on homes, noise, and road closure closures, but also critical issues around pedestrian and ADA access, safety for Kenesha's university students, and workforce uh opportunities. Uh we've heard questions uh around funding, impacts on local businesses, public transportation access, and the protection of restored resources as well. All of these issues are connected to the quality of life surrounding the East Delvin uh neighborhood, and we take each one seriously. Community feedback has driven how we evaluate impacts and shape uh and shape mitigation strategies, and it will continue uh to guide how we move forward with the project. Uh in response to the input that we've gotten, uh last year in November, uh we drafted a preliminary community sentiment report. And this report outlines our community outreach that we've uh done from August to October of twenty twenty-four. And it captures key themes, concerns, and public preferences. It's not just a summary. It's also a commitment to ensure that community voices are considered in the decisions that affect these neighborhoods. And we thank the community for their engagement, and we encourage continued participation throughout the process. Uh were there any questions so far from anyone regarding that?
What about the noise on the long, long street? I've been working on the order and EIS. But what about the ways that you said about Jeff's and Florida, you know, at Air Ferry, I've read the book, I see what the state is going to be working on it, whether it's going to be completed. What about that noise from the traffic still that you guys put away?
So we did a full analysis on potential impacts from noise and traffic, and it's going to be presented in just a couple of minutes. So we're going to dig deeper into that, those topics right there. Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Uh so now we're going to get into the actual assessments that were done within the EIS. Uh not everyone is super familiar with the environmental review process. So we're going to try and take each one of the categories one at a time and explain why we did what we did and what we found. Uh but just, you know, backing up so we understand where the project is, the project location is here, and the reason that that location has been selected is because it's the proper location to be able to take this um combined sewer flow offline, store it, and then put it back into um the infrastructure that already exists in order to get it to the Bird Island Waste Water Treatment Facility. So again, the water is being stored in this location, held until after the storm event passes, and then goes back to the facility for treatment. And the draft environmental impact statement, when you're doing this in New York State, there's several different uh resource categories that you have to take a look at and understand how the project will affect them. And so these are the ones we're going to go through today. It's a long list. Uh we'll try and take some time on each one. We'll have a couple of places to pause so people can ask questions, and then there'll be questions at the end. And comments. So Rebecca touched on this a little bit, but the way that you do an environmental impact statement is you go out at the time now that we're doing the study, and you collect information, which is the baseline conditions. And then you need to understand, okay, in a few years when this project is happening, will anything change in the area? So you talk about the future condition, because there's things that happen in an area. There can be construction. There can be people moving in, people moving out. So you want to understand what does it look like today? What is it going to look like at the timeframe that the project is implemented? That's called the future, future with the proposed action without. So the without the proposed action just assumes that everything else that would already happen in the neighborhood is happening without this project. And then the future with it puts the project on top of that to see if there's any additional impacts. So you're comparing apples to apples. Uh you wouldn't want to compare a project that's, say, happening ten years from now to what's existing in the community today, because the community might look different in ten years. In our case, the future conditions that we're looking at are twenty twenty-seven and twenty thirty-one. Twenty twenty-seven is when the project will be at peak construction, and twenty thirty-one is when it will be completed and operational. And as Rebecca said, at this point, the, we also changed the alternatives from A to B to B and C. So the C is the storage tank, and that is the preferred alternative. That's, so we'll talk about that. But EIS evaluates all three of these alternatives. I guess it's one thing to say that the, you know, alternative A isn't really an option because Buffalo Sewer is under consent order to do the CSO project, but you still evaluate it for comparison purposes. And in general, in the future, without the proposed action, so in twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty-one, the conditions are going to be pretty similar to what they are today. So in this case, you can think about it essentially being the same. Uh and once the facility is operational, you know, when it's operational, it's going to be underground. There's a couple of above-ground structures. Cars will occasionally come throughout the week to service it, uh or trucks from Buffalo Sewer. And then during certain storm events, it will be online, so it'll be operating, but it's below ground. You won't really know. So there aren't really impacts associated with operation, like you might imagine if there was like a large apartment complex being constructed, and there'd be more parking and more people in the neighborhood. Once it's operational, it's going to largely seem like today. So a lot of the focus of this is the impacts during construction. Okay, so diving in. First is the land use zoning and public policy. So the reason why you do this for an impact assessment is you want to make sure that the project's not going to have any changes that in any way. Like, if you have a residential area only, and you're trying to put in some industrial facility, that would be a non allowable land use. If the zoning is a certain way, certain heights of facilities, things like that, then you need to make sure that your project's going to fit within it. And then public policy is, you might have a policy that, you know, says we need to preserve trees. And so if you had a project that was cutting down thousands of trees, that would be against that public policy. So that's why you do a land use zoning and public policy analysis. In this case, um in the study area, we look at the study area, and so it's Kenesha's properties, open space, the transit, NFTA facilities, and really residential and commercial is a lot in the, in the college, at the university, is what's happening in this location. And the project wouldn't change any of that. Again, the facility is going to be underground. The above-ground structure will be made to fit with the character of the neighborhood. The project is zoned to allow this use. The project, the land use has allowed this use um as a utility facility. And so there's not going to be any impacts to land use zoning or public policy. Uh moving on to socioeconomic conditions. So again, the reason why you would do this is if you had a large, you know, like a, like a Walmart or something coming in, it might change the socioeconomic conditions. It'll bring jobs. It will change the character of the neighborhoods. You look at that. Or if there's a really big project like this one that has to be funded, sometimes water and sewer rates can go up as a result of those projects. In this case, Buffalo Sewer has the funding um secured to be able to do the project. And also, um, some external rate payers, like some, that might change, but the actual rate payers within the, just this area of Buffalo, within the state of Buffalo will not change. So it's not going to affect rates to construct this project. Um again, during construction, we expect it to be local construction crews that are coming in to do the work. And so we wouldn't expect like a huge influx of workers that would need to be housed and have medical care and childcare and things like that. Uh and so we're not expecting any socioeconomic changes to this neighborhood as a result of the project. So similarly, community facilities and services, you know, if there were a large number of construction workers for a very long time, or there was like a large apartment complex going in, there might be an increased demand for community facilities, such as police facilities, emergency services, schools, daycare facilities, and things like that. So we did do a baseline conditions assessment to see, okay, what's in the area in terms of um community facilities? And you can see there are about twenty-two that were identified, so the ones you would expect, schools, community centers, healthcare facilities. But none of those would end up being impacted as a result of the project. We're not displacing any. We're not bringing in new people to use those facilities. Uh we're not obstructing access to those facilities during construction. One thing that does happen with a construction project is we would alert the local emergency medical system services that the project's going on in the event that there was a um, you know, someone got injured, that the hospitals and nearby EMTs would know that that was going on and would be able to have capacity to service the injured people from the construction. But in general, no, no impact to community facilities. So open space and recreation. So again, you look around and you try and see what are the open space and recreational resources within the community? And will those be changed or impacted as a result of the project, either it's construction or operation? In this case, um there were several nearby open spaces that were identified, the biggest being um Forest Lawn Cemetery. Uh and then several some within the project area, and the EDAC actually helped us identify um one more that we hadn't had before. And those are all there. These are the ones that are, you know, reasonably walkable from the project site. And while these facilities might hear increased noise during construction, again, we're not going to preclude access to them. We're not going to be doing any construction activities within these areas. And so therefore, there's not any um direct or indirect impact on those open space recreational resources. And so we would not expect the project to have an impact. So geology and groundwater. Uh this, we took a look at the geology in the area, and this actually, there is some unique geology here. I guess one thing is that there's a lot of bedrock in this area. So either alternative is going to require quite a bit of excavation of bedrock. But excavating the bedrock does not change the geology of the conditions, the, you know, subsurface conditions. There is on the tunnel, there's a formation, a geo, a geologic formation that has some hydrogen sulfide um gas trapped in it, which is an odorless gas that sort of, or sorry, colorless gas. I think it sort of smells a little bit sulfuric. And so that was a consideration that we'll talk about when we get to odor and air quality, uh about how to protect workers from that and protect the, the public from that or to be encountered. And we also did an analysis to try and figure out the likelihood of encountering that, which is, especially moving to the tank, it's not highly likely it will be encountered. But there is, you know, a potential that it could be, again, that wouldn't be a geology impact. It's just something in the geology that might cause an odor impact or an air quality impact. Uh but otherwise, you know, even though a lot of um construction happening, it would not change the geologic character of the area. So no impacts here either. Archaeological, historic, and cultural resources. So for these types of analyses, you reach out and you provide to the state Historic Preservation Office. You provide them a map that shows the project location and a description of what's going on for the project. And they have a database that includes information on historic districts, on eligible or on eligible or listed historic structures, or on any archaeologically sensitive areas. Where if you dig up an area, you might encounter archaeological resources and you have to be sure you're handling that well. So we gave this to them. They incurred that there was nothing, no archaeological sensitive area here. A lot of it's been previously disturbed or is bedrock. And that there were not any historic buildings in the area, but there is the historic district. So just off the side, off Jefferson Avenue to the east. And so east of our project site is a historic district. And I'm blanking on the name all of a sudden. Oh, the Hamlet Park. The Hamlet Park Historic District is there. So we did consider that in the vibration analysis in terms of what impact there might be on the district. But because there's no active construction in that location and there won't be like views of the district that are blocked or views from the district towards the site that are blocked as a result of the project, there's no impact, there's no impact anticipated on those resources. And we'll talk about it a little bit in the vibration analysis, but there will be blasting as part of this project. And that blasting will be slow and contained and at levels where we might perceive vibrations, but they're not going to be damaging to structures. So even though this is near the historic district, we wouldn't expect any impacts to any of the structures in the district as a result of the blasting. All right, visual resources and community character. So for this one, again, you want to make sure that any project you're doing is going to be consistent with how the community feels and how it looks. And so we took a look at the surrounding area and understood, you know, the campus facilities, residential buildings. So we're not going to go here and build some gigantic facility that wouldn't fit in. So even though there are above-ground structures, making them more smaller size, sort of what you might expect from a small utility building in a neighborhood, that's what it will look like once it's operational. During construction, there will be views that are of construction activities. There will be fencing to try and block that and keep it contained. But there will obviously be some changes infused during the construction period. But those will be temporary and not significant. Anyway, so once it's operational and the facilities are there, we also have a landscape architect on the team who is going to ensure that the plantings around the facility serve a couple of purposes. One, that they can provide some potential habitat and meadow for like monarch butterfly or include some species that might be otherwise endangered in the area. But then it'll also improve the visual character of this location. And we have been working closely on the Florida Street project with the community to be able to identify what types of trees might be preferred to be planted. And they would match other trees with, in coordination with the Buffalo, City of Buffalo and their arborists, match other trees from the area. So then again, it's like all keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And so we won't expect any impacts to visual resources as a result of the project. Oh, I, so natural resources, very similar. So natural resources, they're, you know, given it's an urban environment, there are some trees. There aren't any trees being cut down as part of this project, just replanted. On Florida Street, there were trees cut down. This is an area that can see like bats move through it. So you just cut them down in the wintertime and you don't have an impact to the endangered bat species. But otherwise, there's not any critical habitats for threatened or endangered species in the area. And again, we will include a planting plan post-construction that is adding both a visual element to the project site and also will be introducing some more natural resources to the location. All right, so hazardous materials. So for a project, there are two ways that you can encounter hazardous materials. One is that when you're doing excavation, you could end up excavating soil that has maybe been previously contaminated. And so one of the studies that you do is you take a look at these online databases from the state to try and understand what contamination might be present. So it's clear to see in the actual document, but there's these sites that are around our site that have been identified as being the location of former things like funeral homes or dry cleaning facilities, things like that, that may have had spills in the past. Doesn't mean they have, but they could have had spills in the past. And if you have a spill that's not properly cleaned, then it can migrate through the soil and groundwater and get to our project site. So if you identify these and give them the proximity after that first assessment, then there'll be a second assessment to actually excavate soils on our project site and test them in the groundwater just to make sure that there's no actual contamination in the areas where we'll be excavating. And if there is, you do that before the project happens. So you can inform the contractor, like, oh hey, there's this soils material, this material that might need to be handled differently. You make sure you're taking it to an appropriate facility and handling it in accordance with all the right regulations. And, you know, similarly, with the groundwater, like if there's any groundwater pumping, it's going to be treated before it's discharged to the environment of the sewer. So you don't have to worry about having any contaminants in that F1 either. And then the other way you can have hazardous materials impacts is if you are a contractor and you have, like, what's his chemicals on site to help you do the work, you need to make sure they're properly handled, properly stored, so that you don't accidentally create a spill from your own project. So since we'll be having all the proper controls in place and we'll be doing this study before any excavation happens, there shouldn't be any risk of exposure to the construction workers, the environment, or the public from hazardous materials. So we're not anticipating any impacts for this resource category. Water and sewer infrastructure is the whole point of the project and why we're here. So we are here to improve the sewer infrastructure in the area and allow it to better pass and ultimately treat at the wastewater treatment plant the combined sewer effluent. And so that will be a positive benefit. That's a positive effect to Skid Row the Creek and downstream water bodies. And so the whole goal of the project is this. We obviously have no significant adverse impacts. We have a beneficial impact to the project, or to the area because of this project and surrounding waterways. There also will be construction stormwater that has to be managed and some deep watering that has to happen. If you're doing a deep excavation, you encounter groundwater. All of that stormwater and groundwater will be properly treated on-site to remove any sediment or anything else before it's disposed so that it wouldn't create a water quality condition in the receiving water bodies or downstream of the wastewater treatment. Okay, this is the last one. We'll take a break for a second after this one. So energy. So again, you evaluate energy because you want to make sure that there is sufficient energy at the project site to be able to construct and operate the project. And so since there's not a lot of, you know, the construction equipment will all be powered, self-powered, like diesel, things like that, from the trucks. The energy that we're thinking about here is the energy to ultimately operate the facility. There will be some valves and gates that are operated to open and close and let water flow into the tank and out of the tank. There'll be an odor control system at the facilities to be sure that when the water's stored in the tank, there's not an odor issue within the neighborhood. There are required, that has some power requirements associated with it. But in general, the power requirements for this facility are quite small. There'll be some lighting. So the existing grid in this neighborhood at this location can handle that additional, that addition of energy requirements. And so there wouldn't be an impact from the project on this either. Stop for a second. We're going to get to the hard ones now. We did traffic error and noise, but we blew through those quickly. Does anyone have any questions yet on what we presented? Okay, so transportation. So this one's a little bit more, I guess, interesting and tricky. Obviously, this is being constructed in an area that has a lot of traffic. It's in the neighborhood. People use East Sullivan Avenue a lot, Jefferson Avenue, Main Street. And so we wanted to really make sure that we did this more in-depth review from a traffic standpoint. And so the way that you do that is you first take a look at the area roadways and you understand what the traffic patterns are on those roadways. So we have a specialty subconsultant from Buffalo to take a look at this and to understand what's going on. So you look at the roadways, you try and understand the network. You do that, you try and understand, okay, at this particular intersection, they can say, what's the level of service? Which essentially means, you know, how long do you have to wait before you can turn a certain direction? How long is the light delay? Does it back up? So you can really get an understanding about how traffic moves along the streets that will be used for the project. This project's a little bit more interesting because you also have, we're on the detour for a short period of time. So about six to nine months, portion of East Sullivan Avenue, just east of the MNT Bank driveway and west of Spillin will be closed to through traffic. And so there will be, we'll talk about this in a minute, but there will be detours. So we also had to do an analysis to say, okay, what is the, what is the, how are the traffic conditions changing with the detours? We also wanted to take a really close look at public safety from like a bicycle and a pedestrian standpoint, because this is at the campus. We want to make sure we took a look at that. And then the other thing that I guess is more typical of a construction project is you want to look at, how many trucks are you adding? And how many cars are you adding to the project site during construction? So this table here has the total number of truck trips and the total number of workers that are anticipated throughout the construction duration for the deep storage tank. And as you can see, you know, the peak periods is Q3 2027, where we anticipated that about 50 workers coming to and from the site and about 15 trucks. The difference here is the workers are one in. So like, there'll be like about 50 people who come to the site in the morning, park, stay there all day and work, and at the end of the day, they leave. There's 50 that leave. The truck number is representing truck trips per hour. So you think about if there's like excavation happening or if there's concrete course happening, there's also deliveries happening. You know, we want to make sure that we're looking at how many trucks will go in and out. And for a truck, like, it's one trip in for the hour, then they're leaving in the same hour, so it counts as two. So the 15 number is trips per hour, but it's actually like seven trucks per hour. And you then superimpose that on the background traffic in the area to understand if you're going to cause increased delay times at the intersections. And when we did this analysis, we found, especially because the construction workers leave before they, they arrive before the morning peak rush hour traffic and they leave before the PM peak rush hour traffic, that having them, you know, adding them to here, the roadway network can handle it. It doesn't cause any delays. And even the trucks, though, it looks like a big number. There's a lot of traffic in the area, so that the roads cannot handle that number of trucks. So we actually didn't see really any impacts from the construction vehicles that were being added. And all of the impacts, you know, the potential impacts that are coming from the project are actually related to the detour. And this will be important for this analysis and the noise analysis. So the detour routes are shown here. So it's really East Sullivan Avenue right there. It's going to be, not the whole thing closed, but a bunch will be closed. So then we're going to try and redirect people down to East Ferry Street, Jefferson Avenue. We're really trying to keep people a little bit off of Florida Street. We'll explain why and about that a little bit later. But really, the idea is going to be directing people down or up around this triangle. And even in doing so, there are some, a couple of the intersections will have delays that are a bit higher than they would normally have. So at Florida Street and Jefferson Avenue and East Ferry Street and Jefferson Avenue, there may be some delays. They're not huge delays, a few seconds. They might not be that noticeable, but there technically will be more delays at those sites when the detour is in place. And again, that's for a period of about six to nine months, the full detour. And the other thing is we did take a look at pedestrian crossing and we want to work really closely with Canesha's University to make sure that that's safe. But there wasn't a lot of people jaywalking, so we're less worried about people coming, you know, from the northern part of the campus down to the facilities here on South of East Sullivan and jaywalking across that street. Because if that street's closed, we really want to encourage the students to go over to Main and cross at the light, or come over to Jefferson and cross at that light, just to be careful. One other thing to note is that we're hoping to have truck haul routes so to keep the trucks out of the neighborhoods. You know, we're hoping the trucks will come in and out of Main onto East Sullivan. And so that will both be better from like a traffic delay perspective and just keeping the trucks as much as we can, you know, off the neighborhood streets. So then the contractor will be informed that that's a commitment that we're making to the community to try and have that happen as much as possible. But that's another reason why it's really important to be coordinating with Canesha's and also coordinating with NFTA because there's that bus stop there. So we're already in conversations with them to make sure that that's all going to be protected and accessible during construction. Okay, so then air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and odor. So this one, we also did some background data collection. So there are lots of air quality monitoring stations that the state has to let you know if the neighborhood that you're in has any issues with any contaminants, that you already have too high levels of things like particulate matter or ozone or something like that. Luckily, this neighborhood does not have that. All of the air quality indicators are good and below the regulated levels. But we did want to make sure that we did some additional background data collection, particularly due to the hydrogen sulfide issues. And so we did that and found that, you know, there were not, there's not anything to worry about. There's no background levels of hydrogen sulfide that would be a concern already. And so we're not expecting any issues from the project or any emissions from the project to cause an impact. And even if there were to encounter the hydrogen sulfide during excavation, the contractor will have a plan in place to be able to manage that. They know it exists, they can protect their staff, they can protect the community from any inhalation issues that might occur if that were to be released. And so with those protections in place, we're not expecting any impacts from the, from an air quality perspective with respect to the project. And then on odor, like I mentioned before, there will be an odor control facility or odor control equipment that's built into the facilities that are planned to be able to maintain odors and not have issues with odors when the project is being operated. So with those things all in place, we're not expecting any air quality or odor issues. Last one's noise. And so this is the only, the only thing we've found that we're really identifying as having a significant impact on the community. Traffic, I think there will be that small, the small delays. Potentially, we have some things we can do to mitigate that. But from a noise perspective, you know, there's going to be two key things that cause noise issues. One is going to be the actual construction and excavation at the Canesha's property site. And the other thing is during the six to nine month period when East Sullivan is shut down, traffic will be detoured in the overnight hours on the Florida Street. And so the increased traffic, so even if there's not construction traffic, just the fact that the traffic that's already on the street is going to be directed south and not everyone might follow the detour. They might take a shortcut across Florida. We're expecting that the noise on Florida will increase just as a result of traffic, not as a result of construction. So there's a couple of things we're doing. So for the construction, we're going to put up the fencing that has some like noise attenuating fabric to try and limit that as much as possible. But there will be noises that are greater than the level, it's called 80 decibels essentially. So that's very perceptible. People will hear the construction. So we'll have the fabric on the fencing. We also will only be doing construction during daytime construction hours. And luckily, with the exception of some comes down here at the end of Florida and Spillin, where there will also be some other construction happening to accept the Spillin Tunnel. You know, for the most part, the construct, noise of construction activity is a little bit away from residences. That's a good thing. And then on the Florida Street, we're suggesting, asking the contractor to put up signage that basically says, "Not a through street for detour", trying to deter further people from using that as an unofficial detour route and then increasing the noise there even greater. Vibrations is another one that people have been very interested in in the community, understandably. And so there will be blasting happening, which is both loud and you can feel it. Again, moving this to the deep tank option really removes more of the vibration impact away from the residences and from fewer residents than if it was going all the way down to East Sullivan, the tunnel. And so again, you know, people are pretty perceptive at feeling vibrations. And so you can feel it a lot more than it might be doing damage. But there will be some things in place. We will be having the contractor hopefully having a regular schedule with the blasting. It won't happen multiple, you know, happen like a couple times a day, not like consistently throughout the day. There will be a blast or an air horn to let people know that it's going to happen. It'll be on the website when blasting is like, it's during a period where blasting is occurring. And we also will be encouraging the contractor, recording the contractor to do pre-construction surveys of people's homes. So go into the homes, they can document any cracks in the plaster, any like cracks in the foundation, porch issues, whatever is going on, to be able to report that ahead of time so that if during construction, someone says, hey, this crack is getting worse or something has happened to my steps, my porch,[1744.66] or something has happened to my steps, my porch, you know, the contractor can go back out. And if it is sound to be caused by the project, you know, Buffalo Sewer and the contractor will work with the community to get that remedied. But really, we'll also be doing the blasting slowly, so like happen and make sure that there's no impacts and then happen again. And we can adjust the ways the blasting is done as the construction progresses in order to just be doubly sure that there's not going to be an impact from vibration. So public health is really a compilation chapter. It's like hazardous materials, noise, air quality. And since we're not having impacts anywhere there but noise, you know, there's not going to be an impact. We're not expecting that this project would impact people's public health, like increase asthma rates. It's not going to do anything to the community that would endanger the community in any way. So there's not, not an anticipated impact on public health. And then environmental justice. So a secret requires you to look and understand that the community that you're in and make sure you're not putting undue burden on that community. And so we did take a look and this is a P E G A community. So I think it's a preliminary environmental justice area or forgot what P stands for. But, you know, so we understand that community is here. That is a lot of why this engagement is happening to make sure that the community feels, you know, that they have a voice, that they can hear what their concerns are and that we can provide a project that is at least impactful as possible. And again, we're not going to be having a lot of impacts from this project overall, certainly not once it's operational. So we wouldn't expect that to have like unintended consequences on the community. Finally, we also took a look at other projects that are happening in the area and we've gotten lots of the feedback from the community about what those might be. We don't have a lot of information yet about these projects when they're happening and time and what they might entail. But as this, we're not, we're not saying that there's going to be any cumulative impacts of our project on top of these projects now. But it might be something that happens in the future. We will keep looking at this as we go forward. And again, the main unavoidable adverse impacts that we found is really there's going to be some temporary, temporary traffic impacts at those two intersections. So there's some things that can be done with the city of Buffalo to change the timing, the signal timing. And so that, that will be in place if they agree in order to alleviate those impacts. And then from a noise perspective, you know, there will be, it will be noisy, but it is temporary and we'll do the best we can to work with the community to reduce the noise as much as possible. All right. So then after you guys are making the public comments today or over the next few days, we will prepare the comment response document starting late August and the final environmental impact statement at the year. And this is where you can find it and provide comments. Mark back to you.
Thanks, Katie. All right. And again, if you'd like to review the draft environmental impact statement in more detail, you can do so online at buffalosewer.org/eastdelivensewer. And there you'll find downloadable versions of all of the environmental documents and related materials. You can also use the QR code on the screen here to access the site directly. In addition to tonight's in-person hearing, we're also holding a virtual hearing, virtual public hearing tomorrow, July 24th from 12 noon to 2 PM. And the hearing link is available on the same project webpage. And we encourage you to join that as well and share your thoughts. And as I stated before, we are collecting both oral and written comments. And we give equal weight to both. You can submit your written feedback via mail or email by August 22nd. The address to send in your written comments is there on the screen. And we kindly ask that if you are submitting your comments by email, that you use the email subject eastdelivensw comments. If you have any follow-up questions or need further assistance, please reach out directly to Regina Harris, our senior engineer for the project. Her contact details are on the screen there. And you're always welcome to in the QR code on the screen. Thank you, everyone. Are there any questions related to tonight's presentation?
Is, well, no, is everything going to be done in August or in the summer or at the end of the year?
Is this in relation to Florida Street or?
Construction, all this project, it's going to be done in the summer or at the end of the year? No, it's like.
For, you're talking about the, the tank?
Yeah.
So this is, so it's not this year at all for the tank. Let's go back to, go back to slides here.
What slide was that?
So the tank we're talking about, 2026, at the earliest breaking ground. 2030 would be the end of construction. As far as the Florida Street project, we're at the point where we've got finished paving and then we're done. So that project's ninety-five percent complete at this point. So that's phase one. Phase two, we are really trying to hit, you know, the start construction probably next fall if possible, next year. And then it would be really 2027, the majority of the construction would be other way. And so that, again, the offline storage tank, that would be late 2026 would really be the earliest that we would be breaking ground. And really it's 2027 that we really would be, you'd see folks mobilizing. 2026, if, if we're able to do anything, it's really going to be more the paperwork side. So that's where Mark and Rebecca are going to be stuck in their offices for weeks on end, reviewing all kinds of submissions and paperwork. And the public won't see a lot, but things will be happening behind the scenes. But so really, again, just Spillman Sewer, that at the end of next summer or into the fall, you might see something. Really with the offline storage tank, you're not going to see much on the ground till 2027. Just where we are, how long it's going to take us to get to a final contract, bid it out, because we are a public entity. We do need to do competitive bidding. There is a significant process with that. We do have to accept the lowest responsible bidder for any work that we're doing as a public entity. They, with the, but with that, because Buffalo Sewer Authority's commitment, but also the funding sources that we are using, there are minority women and low and disadvantaged businesses have to be part of the contractors' teams. And so there are specific percentages of minority, minimum, disadvantaged businesses. And I believe with the Spillman Sewer, actually the service disabled veteran owned business enterprise requirement kicks in as well because Spillman Sewer, we are looking for DEC funding that's already been secured. The offline, so that's Department of Environmental Conservation has already promised us $10 million for the Spillman Sewer. The offline storage tank, that's a different state entity that is providing the majority of the funding for that. And they have slightly different requirements for how we need to employ traditionally underrepresented businesses. So. The timeline at this point is still a little fuzzy, but that's basically from the public perspective, what the timeline looks like. Like I said, there's a public timeline and then there's what we know we need to hit internal regarding getting that contract in place, getting drawings from the contractor, getting plans for how they're going to do their work. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's paperwork that is part of the contract timeline, but it's not part of the physical construction. Yes, so 2026, 2030, that's where we would be in various phases of a contract, but the actual construction here more 2027.
My question is for the six to nine month closure for East Sullivan, has there been any conversations with Buffalo Public Schools to ensure that the kids there stays, if they rely on the train station and also the 2026, which will be disrupted a little bit and then maybe the eight mainway? I was just curious.
So we have not had any specific conversations with Buffalo Public Schools. We have had conversations with NFTA, which runs those buses. And with an understanding also that we need to ensure that people can get to the Sullivan metro line as well. With other projects, we have tried to stay to work as much as possible to reduce impacts on students. And again, we are looking several years out now already for the offline storage tank. And when those six to nine months will occur. So we will work with NFTA to try to, again, mitigate as much as possible the impacts on students. There's going to have to be some impact when we talk about six to nine months of work. The good thing is, is that when we need to most likely shut down the street, we don't want to shut down the street in the middle of winter. That doesn't help us with construction to shut down the street in December. We would be shutting it down in the fall and the summer and then the spring when, and the students would be using those buses, yes, in the fall and the spring, but not so much that they would have access when getting close to the buses is most important for the students. Because in those winter months, that's when I bike all the time and I take buses all the time. My staff laughs at me because I'm an enthusiastic user of public transit, both in Buffalo and anytime that I travel anywhere, I will find the bus routes and the cycle, the bicycles that you can rent locally and make use of that. So I am highly cognizant of, if it is cold out, I don't want to be walking an extra three blocks. If it's March, can I have to walk an extra three blocks? That's a lot less of an impact than it is January, you know, walking an extra three blocks. So we will reach out to Buffalo Public Schools. We actually have a very good relationship with Buffalo Public Schools and Buffalo Sewer Authority. In several Eastside neighborhoods, we're going to be putting in green infrastructure on Buffalo Public School lands. So we've been cultivating that relationship over the past couple of years to make that happen. So we will reach out, but again, the primary contact is the NFTA because ultimately they own the buses.
Thank you for your good presentation. I think my question for the area impacted by vibrations was mentioned that those houses would be inspected. And my question is, what if a resident refuses to be inspected and they bring a claim? How is that going to be handled?
So if a resident doesn't allow an inspection, we will still work with the contractor to go in and do an inspection and understand, you know, what damage might be there. The challenge that's presented is that if there wasn't an inspection done before, it's hard for us to understand exactly when some damage occurred. So it's always in the resident's best interest to allow those inspection teams to come in. Those inspection teams are third parties, so we would have the contractor hire somebody else. So it's a third party that's coming in and evaluating if there was any issues. So our recommendation would be for residents to allow those third-party inspectors to come in beforehand. And that would, if something did occur, that would definitely escalate the process. But I also want to reiterate, the whole intent of the design of the program and the way it will be executed is to avoid any, any damage to any structures. Any more questions? Questions, comments?
Since there doesn't seem to be any more questions or comments from the group, I did want to make sure that residents are aware of and are sharing with their friends and neighbors. And especially if you have older family members. If you are a resident of the city of Buffalo and you are sixty-five years and older and the owner of your home, you are eligible for the enhanced STAR exemption. And if you qualify for that, then on your sewer bill, you save $106 per year on your sewer. And your water bill, you should be getting a thirty-six percent discount on your water bill. So that is for those sixty-five and older residents. Also, if you are low income, so that's $54,250 for a single person household, up to $102,300 if you have up to eight people in your household. You qualify for $60 off on your sewer bill, $106 off on your water bill. And if you're very low income, so this is, but standards, $33,950 for a single person, up to $64,000 for a family of eight. You qualify for $90 off annually your sewer bill and $144 off on your water bill. For those low income and very low income, you need, you need to actually apply to get that because Buffalo Water and Sewer do not have income data in order to base those credits on. But if you go to getwaterwisebuffalo.org, if you go to buffalosewer.org, there's a link to that. If you go to buffalo water dot promiscipate dot com, it's the direct link. Any of those sites, you go with your water bill account in hand and it's about a five-minute process to apply for those discounts. And we know that we have a lot of folks that are low income and very low income in the city of Buffalo. And we want to make sure that those that have the least ability to pay their water and sewer bills are not being put out of their homes because they're paying for water and sewer. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work just maintaining a system that's 175 years old, maintaining a treatment plant that's nearly ninety years old. It takes a lot of money to make that happen, but we don't want it to be a burden on our residents. Thank you.
All right, everyone. Thank you for all your questions and your comments. We do appreciate you all coming out here tonight. Again, the virtual option of this public hearing is tomorrow from 12 to 2 PM. Please visit the project's website for the Zoom link to join that virtual hearing. And again, thank you for joining us tonight. And please make sure to grab some food to take home with you and have a lovely evening.
One last thing I was asked to share is August 29th, 4 to 7 PM, Hoyt Lake. We are having our Queen City Clean Waters Fair. There will be all kinds of opportunities to learn more and engage in a much more fun and interactive way about clean waters and the overall Queen City Clean Waters program and what Buffalo Sewer is doing with all the money you're sending us. Thank you.
And if you think there's something else after today, you do have until August 22nd to submit your questions and comments. Just a reminder. Thank you. Thank you.